Didn't work out.
I think I got an employee.
At this time, I'd like to call to order the Human Services Committee. We can all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If the clerk could take their role, please. Commissioner Sumasko.
Here.
Commissioner Baldwin.
Here.
Commissioner Bohm. Commissioner Torello. Commissioner Rushing.
Here.
Commissioner Vandenbosch.
Here.
Commissioner Beeden.
Present. Seeing no additions or deletions or changes to the agenda, I'll accept a motion.
So moved to accept the agenda as presented.
Support Baldwin. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Are there any citizens wishing to be heard this evening for the Human Services Committee? Seeing none. Are there any updates? Seeing none. Any conceptual initiatives? No old business, moving on to new business. 7A, Health Department, Relocation and Renovation, Architectural Services, RFP Award and Recommendation?
Make a motion to move to the full board.
Support.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item 7B, Michigan Forensics Agreement.
Make a motion, send it. Full board.
Support. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item C, Housing Matters Incorporated, the Foundation's Program Expansion Agreement. This is for final action tonight?
Make a motion for final action.
Support. Any discussion?
To question the basis for final action, usually there's a pretty good reason, but don't know why it's final action.
There's, Jenny's here if she wants to speak on it, but there is a need for the agreement to get finalized so that we can purchase the home and get it renovated as quickly as possible.
Time, it's a time constraint then. Okay, thank you.
Yeah, the auction is tomorrow.
That's a good reason. Thank you.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Roll call. Oh, sorry, roll call.
Roll call.
Commissioner Sumasko?
Yes.
Commissioner Baldwin?
Yes.
Commissioner Rushing?
Yes.
Commissioner Vandenbosch?
Yes.
Commissioner Beeden?
Yes. Item 8, are there any other Human Services matters tonight? Seeing none, move on to item 9. I'll accept a motion to accept the Health Department Points of Interest.
Make motion, receive and file.
Support. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. I'll accept a motion to receive and file packets. So moved.
Support.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. I'll accept a motion to adjourn. So moved.
Support.
Meeting adjourned.
Calling to the Board of Commissioners Judiciary Public Safety Committee to order. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Sumasko?
Here.
Commissioner Baldwin?
Here.
Commissioner Beeden?
Present.
Commissioner Bohm. Commissioner Torello. Commissioner Rushing?
Here.
Commissioner Vandenbosch?
Here.
Need a motion to approve the agenda.
I'll make a motion to accept the agenda as presented.
Support.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, carried. Any citizens to be heard for judiciary public safety? Hearing none, moving on to, any updates? None, moving on to conceptual initiatives.
I had a matter, Dave. The, at this time, I emailed everybody a one-page, three-paragraph conceptual initiative relative to upgrading some radios for fire departments. It states as follows. I'd like to propose a conceptual initiative for discussion and future action by this board to make an allocation for remaining unallocated ARPA rescue funds, monies, to meet current 800-millihertz radio needs for all fire departments within St. Clair County. After the full board meeting last month, there was approved a second allocation of ARPA monies from the districts. It was brought to my attention, and that was primarily through Jeff, and I think Dave Rushing had asked about it. There was some interest in supplying, helping these fire departments, especially townships and municipalities, update their equipment like we did with the Sheriff's Department as a capital expenditure with radios that meet the current needs. The other ones actually were part of some processes when I was on the board two decades, decade and a half ago from Stone Garden money, and that got the first round of radios. But it goes on, I believe that the UCRPA funds is appropriate. We did it for the Sheriff's Department. The upgrade would be a priority for the county, serve the entire county in protecting citizens, first responders. I did call Bill Dieter at Jeff's suggestion to talk about the issue with the radios. Jeff was looking to put some of the monies from the allocation to the districts out, maybe for radios to the fire departments in his township, and that started some discussion with some of the other departments. And Ed Gratz, who's with Kimball, volunteered to put some information together. There's a spreadsheet attached to the email I sent out that lists a general, very general synopsis of the number of radios and so forth. It would still be a sizable expenditure. The radios could run anywhere from, you know, a couple thousand to 5,000 apiece, or maybe 4,500 average for radios, just kind of guessing. But I just want to put an initiative out there to talk about it. It would be 267 handhelds, 105 trucker car radios, some dual-head, some single-head, total 372 radios. Cost, again, was just a general idea. I'm sure that there's, as Don Patterson, I'm told from our emergency management office, has a lot of knowledge in the area, and I don't know, Carrie, if this is something that the administration kind of looks at or has people put together in some fashion if there's an interest, but to reach out maybe, and they're eager to assist in looking at that and getting some numbers for us. If we fund it county-wide, the upgrade with unallocated funds, apart from the separate $1-million allocation at the last full board meeting, that upgrade would meet that basic critical need and would address it rather than delay it. So I would like to discuss that. I know there's, I think there's going to be some buy-in if we go forward, but that's the conceptual initiative. I just wasn't sure how to put it out there, you know, for the discussion officially or formally. Carrie, I don't know if you can suggest any workshop or committee or something or...
So at our last meeting, we did allocate the rest of the funds outside of the million to each district to county internal projects. So I don't know if that would require a change to that. I know that I've been speaking with the two townships within my district, and they were going to just go through the million that was allocated to me, but then the discussion turned into, is there a benefit to ordering all of them together? Is there a cost savings, but could it also be a hindrance if you're doing a larger order? Is it harder to get? So I don't know where those conversations need to start, but I know from my district perspective, I'm okay to do it out of my million if we've already allocated the other, but whatever probably makes the most fiscal sense.
I was at a chief's meeting today, and we actually discussed it because there is a, you know, economies of scale to make a larger order to reduce the per cost, per cost per, you know, radio, but there is a long delay in, you know, by the time we get them through the state and get them in. Most of the radios now, what it is, is the encryption. As you spoke about the, this is the radio that in question that the county bought back in when we went to the 800-megahertz, and it cannot be encrypted according to Motorola. So the reason why we're going for new radios is to have them all be able to be encrypted and have new technology for better communication. So most of the chiefs have bought into buying one variety or one manufacturer right now, but I'd like to meet with the fire chiefs at a chief's meeting and probably get some more information from them, too. I know Ed did contact almost all the chiefs, so he's got a pretty good and detailed list. So I don't know where we need to go from this. Did we allocate all the remaining funds?
I would suggest that this would be an internal expenditure as well. It does serve townships, but they're all within St. Clair County, and if we needed to tweak something, we could. If there's, if there's an interest in looking at it, there's obviously a way to get it done, even if we had to renew, review, revisit that issue and change the nature of that. If there's no interest in it, that's fine. We just let it die, but I thought we should at least discuss it. It creates a hardship for the smaller townships, a little bit of money, like in seven districts, a million dollars, all the townships that go out, the monies, you know, there's a lot of things that are needed. We did fund the Sheriff's Department as first responders for law enforcement. You know, I think the fire departments should be treated the same. They're not exactly the same, but, you know, it's apples and oranges, but it's an expenditure that meets a critical need. It's core services, it's things that are just, you know, without a doubt, need to be handled, and sooner the better. So this would be the way to allocate some of those funds for those kinds of projects. For that particular project, at least, because we did it for the Sheriff's Department, yes, it does serve entities outside the county, corporate as such, but it isn't a county issue serving only county departments, all municipalities, all townships within the county. And I understand there's a lot more connectivity between them by reason of the new radios. They can then react, again, better together in response to issues, large issues. So I just want to get some discussion going on it. Jeff had me call Dieter. That's what Dieter was talking about. That's what Gratz is talking about. Evidently, that's what you've been talking to the chiefs about. I'm, I want to consider it, and if there's others that want to consider it, we can talk about it and see if we can do it. If there's some reason not to do it or lack of interest, that's fine, but I just didn't know quite how to get that conversation going formally to get it on the radar and get something moving on it if we are interested in doing it.
I think it's a great, great thing because it's going to save our locals exponentially because we can buy at a larger volume.
I think since we're exploring this for the fire departments, I think we should also look at it for local law enforcement. They do collaborate. If there was a major incident, they'd all need to be on the same wavelength, and I think law enforcement has a need for encryption just as much as fire. So since we are exploring this, let's see what that need is, too, and if we are going to do a bulk buy, let's cover both agencies.
On that point, when I sent the email out to the commissioners, I sent a copy to Bill Dieter and Ed Gratz, and then probably within an hour, I got a call from our Emergency Management Director, Justin Wes Miller. I've not met him, but he expressed that exact point. I said, "Well, that certainly isn't too late to get in to say, get that covered as well." I said, "Well, it's never too late. Let's see if there's interest to go down that road, and we can talk and fit it out." I think that's a good idea as well. You know, for folks on radios, there's other talk about other stuff, but, you know, get people at least a radio so they can communicate, you know, and get everybody, just like we did with Stone Garden, that money came in, they went to 800-megahertz, we did a tower in K-Pac, you could penetrate Michigan basements, they had good equipment. Well, it's, this is just the next, kind of the next step of that.
Evolution, yeah, yep. But outside of what has been allocated to districts, right? That's the only decision we really need to make because we could pool the money from what's already been allocated. So the big question is, does it come out of our million collectively, or does it come out of the remainder that we allocated specifically? Because then does that open it up to another community who wants to do something that might have a benefit? Just asking the question, do we make it specific?
What pot of money do you take it from?
Correct.
My proposal was specifically to take it out as a separate allocation from the remaining funds, just because of the expense of the radios, much of what would go to, say, a township as part of a million-dollar distribution to a district could be eaten up entirely by that particular purchase, rather than say, well, you get part of it or some of it, you know, it just, to me, seems like we did it with the Sheriff's Department. It's just an argument, it can go both ways. But that was my proposal. That's what, that's my position on it, is we make it a standalone allocation because of the nature of the service it provides, the general purpose for the entire county, and make it part of that, and let the township still get the allocation for whatever other needs they may have.
And I could reach out to my coach, chief coach from Clay Township that runs the law enforcement chief's board, and get a survey from him and get some numbers from him next couple of weeks.
I like Lisa's thought. I think we can keep two separate issues if we can. Fire department on one, and have the allocations come separate from the 1 million each, and this represents all 31 municipalities, not just the townships. And you probably understand the radios better, but with the encryption and the mutual aid, we need our fire departments. So if they have to have a major incident where you have numerous townships, even the cities involved into a incident where the fire departments have to be there and the EMS and all that, they need to be able to talk to each other. I don't know if the encrypted radios and the other radios would be able to talk to each other without some type of interruption. So I think we need to have at least the fire department all on the same unit and be able to talk to each other at the same time.
Yeah, they're going to have to put a patch, even if they do encryption, because we won't be able to get radios in time before central actually does go...
So there would be a cost to upgrade the other radios just so they could talk to the encrypted radios, correct?
Well, I don't exactly know how they're going to do it yet, technology-wise. I'm not the, I just want to push the button and talk.
He wanted to get started. If, I'd like to have Lisa's also, because I had the police chief of Memphis talk to me on that, and if we're going to do that, if it's going to benefit the county, I could see getting all the police departments in a separate issue and get seeing what, who could head that up and get a cost to get all theirs encrypted radios, but have it two separate, fire department and the police, and then we'll have costs. We already pretty much got the fire department cost for the, every fire department within St. Clair County. I think we can do the same with the police department, and I believe the police department would be fewer radios, wouldn't they? Well, we already have the sheriff department.
City Port Huron could take a huge...
Some are already done. Some are already ready.
When I talked to Justin Wes Miller today, he said the increase would be about, it would go to 2.1 million.
So another 600 or 2.1 above and beyond the 1.5?
Total, 2.1 total.
So about 600,000. We could get that down and get discussion, another additional 600,000 for police department. I'd like to get that information.
So then I think my only other question for the chiefs would be replacement, a replacement plan. Is this just to cover what they need today? Does it, you know, does it build in anything? Do you buy extra units to make sure? Does everyone have to be Motorola or Kenwood?
That's going to be the question. So I can move forward with it and try and get some more information for the board.
Report something back in two weeks, Steve, would that be possible?
Yep, absolutely.
That'd be helpful. Thank you.
All set, Steve?
Yeah.
Moving on to new, there's no old business, moving on to new business. I need a motion for a friend of the court cooperative reimbursement program contract for 24 to 28.
I'll make a motion to move to full board.
Support.
Any questions? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Moving on to Michigan Indigent Defense Council Grant Agreement Approval.
Motion sent to full board.
Support.
Any questions? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Probate court funds contract?
Make a motion to send to the full board.
Support.
Any questions? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Raise the Age Grant Program?
I'll make a motion to move that to full board.
Support.
Any questions? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Moving on to Secondary Road Program Grant Application?
Motion sent to full board.
Support.
Any questions? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Something?
Well, it had the date. I don't know if that's an incorrect date, that it was, the grant application was due. Did I just see that as September 1?
That is correct. The application was submitted. There is no match, so this is just for the formal approval for the application.
Okay, so we don't need to do final action? I can still go to...
Yep, that's correct.
Okay.
Moving on to sheriff's contract for police services for Memphis Community Schools?
Make a motion and send that to full board.
Support.
Any questions on that?
I just appreciate the sheriff being out there. My grandson's plays in the varsity football team, goes to school out there, and I do see their presence out there, and I went out there twice, and they were out there both times, so just happened to see them out there. I appreciate him being out in Memphis.
Anyone else? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Sheriff's Contract for Police Liaison for Anchor Bay.
I'll make a motion to move that to full board.
Support.
Any questions on that one? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Sheriff's Office Storage Building?
Motion sent to full board.
Support.
Any questions on that? I'd really hate to not get the undersheriff at least up there for a couple of questions. Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Moving on to Homeland Security Advisory Council Membership?
Make a motion to move that to full board.
Support.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Receive and File packets?
So moved.
Support.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Adjournment?
Motion to adjourn?
Support.
All in favor?
Aye.
I don't need it.
You don't need it?
No, thanks.
All right, you can keep it.
At this time, I'd like to call the Environmental Public Works Committee meeting to order. May I have a roll call, please? Commissioner Sumasko?
Present.
Commissioner Beeden?
Present.
Commissioner Bohm. Commissioner Torello. Commissioner Rushing?
Here.
Commissioner Vandenbosch?
Here.
Commissioner Baldwin?
Present. Are there any additions, deletions, or changes to the agenda? Hearing none, may I have a motion to approve the agenda?
Support, or motion?
Support. Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Any citizens wishing to be heard tonight on environmental or public works issues? Any updates from anyone? No, any conceptual initiatives? No old business, moving on to item 7, new business. Item A, the Resolution 2319 for the Michigan National Resource Trust Fund North Channel County Park Development Grant Agreement.
Motion sent to full board.
Support.
Thank you. Any questions, comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item B, contract approval request for the Smiths Creek landfill crushed concrete purchase order increase to SA Torello?
Move to full, move to full board.
Support.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item C, the Aeronautics Advisory Board Appointments? Make a motion to move that to full board.
Support.
Thank you. I have a motion support. Any questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item D, the Eastern Aviation Fuels Inc. Contract Renewal for 2023.
Make motion, move to full board.
Thank you. Support. Thank you. Any questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item 8, the Smiths Creek landfill activities report. Do I have a motion to receive and file?
Make motion to move, just move to full board, or to receive and file.
Support.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item 9, other environmental public works matters. Did you want to talk about, or would you like me to cover from Matt today, his email about the odors that are coming from the landfill? Did anyone, did you guys have a chance to look at the email from Matt Williams?
I didn't see it.
Please hold, let me open it. I read it. Okay, so for several weeks, they've been getting reports, actually probably more than that, where are we? The past five or six weeks that there have been odors near the landfill, and while Matt, you know, Williams states that it's a landfill and there will be odor sometimes, that it has been to unacceptable levels, and so they're on it, they're monitoring it, and they have, they have some resolution within this. So maybe that's something that we can put out. I believe he's been talking to the neighbors in that area, but that there is a significant problem in one of the cells that they'll be taking care of. Other matters. Item 10A, the monthly park financial documents, receive and file?
Make motion, receive and file.
Thank you. Support. Thank you. Any questions, comments? Any questions, comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item 11, motion to receive and file packets.
So moved.
Support.
Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Item 12, motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Support.
Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carry, meeting adjourned.
Let the call the Ways and Means Committee to order, roll call, please.
Commissioner Semasko?
Present.
Commissioner Baldwin?
Present.
Commissioner Beeden?
Present.
Commissioner Boom, Commissioner Torello, Commissioner Vandenbosch?
Here.
Commissioner Rushing?
Here.
Can I have a motion to accept the agenda as presented?
So moved, Baldwin.
Support.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Motion passed. All right, we have four citizens wishing to address the board. We'll start with Larry Jones first.
Larry Jones, Landmark Port here on downtown. As everybody knows, that the Wrigley Center has now opened up. There's still more activities that are coming in the, you know, in the Wrigley Center, and as winter approaches us, more of the musical and downtown, you know, pieces are gonna be active, which is gonna need more parking spaces. So I'm really looking at, and we've wanted, we've talked about this in the past, but it's kind of like until you need it, you really can't ask for it. So the county has the big parking lot there, and we would like signs to be able to be put up saying that the, you know, the county needs that parking from whatever, eight to five, but then after five, there's parking available so that people can park there and, you know, not feel guilty about, you know, not being able to park there. The other thing is, is there was the new street, Michigan was, or Forest Street was put in, and there's the west entrance to that parking lot that was put in that's really not needed. There's a parking off of Quay, or entrance off of Quay Street, so if we could close that off decoratively, we would gain three parking spaces in the county parking lot, and we would gain nine diagonal parking spaces on Forest Street, which is 12 additional parking spaces. And I look at it as every parking space is, you know, is needed. It's been kind of nice to see downtown Port Huron come back around, and, you know, we watch on the weekend cars out there circling the parking lot where there's not a spot to be had, and they're parking over, you know, they'll take a chance to park over in the county parking lot anyway, but I'd like to have signage put up so that it's actually legal to do that. And I guess I want, I'm hoping the county, you know, the county took a big step. We have a grand opening for the Wrigley Center on November 8th, so everybody's invited, you know, to that, and I know the county took a big step in putting trust in me to be able to do something with that building, so I want to say thank you, and hopefully everybody's, you know, proud of it.
Thank you. Before our next one, Carrie, I don't know the feasibility, just because we're gonna be looking at this potentially for the use of parking lot, talking about the one for the, where the health department's gonna be, correct?
Um, so currently, any use of that parking lot is controlled by our lease with the state of Michigan, so we would not be able to make any changes to that lot while we're under lease with the state of Michigan.
Okay.
Um, as I reported during my administrator's report, I believe it was one or two months ago, we are working with the city of Port Huron to take that corner lot behind AT&amp;T on the corner of Quay Street and Merchant, and that will be turned into public parking, and that will add, I believe, 100 more parking spaces downtown.
Thank you. Uh, next, Linda Schwaehofer.
Thank you for your time. Linda Schwaehofer, Chinatownship. I believe, well, I'm sorry that I have missed a couple of the past meetings. I, it was unavoidable, but in the meantime, I understand that the ARPA funds were delegated or authorized to go to each of our districts, and I want to say thank you to those of you that voted for that. It was a pleasant surprise, and you listened, so that was very good. On another note about the ARPA funds, we've stated, I have, as others here in the audience have stated, you know, we do not want to see any further funds going to a 26 Mile Road corridor. We don't want to see any more CCP corporations that might be interested in knocking on our door in our county, and I do believe you signed a resolution to that fact, I'm pretty sure. I think I heard that. It would be the wrong thing to do. We worry about, you know, them infiltrating in the companies that they might try to come into that, you know, where they would be working and serving and maybe, you know, have not the best interest of our nation at heart. I don't know about Magna, I don't believe that that necessarily happened, you know, there. I don't think that happened, but we have to be cautious about what might happen on 26 Mile. I have a question, and I know you're not obligated to answer me here this evening, and Jeff Baum, our chairperson, isn't here, but there have been so many times that I've heard we've, we're going out and we're seeking other funds for this 26 Mile project, and when I hear the "we're," I always wonder, because I know Jeff has made it no secret that, you know, he is the person on the commission that is all about, you know, jobs and taxes, and he says it unashamedly and unabashedly, but I know that in our township, at least when I was supervisor, and if you're really going to operate as a full board, people don't go off and do things in a vacuum, seeking funds of any kind without full support of your board, or at least the proper number of votes that are necessary to go forward and do that, and I don't know if that occurred here at this commission table, if everyone bought into that, you know, seeking funds elsewhere. So I would caution this commission...
Finish up, Linda.
Okay. I would caution the commission to think about that. Thank you.
Tiffany Turk.
It's been a year and a half since public discussions began regarding developing Marine City Highway. A year and a half of the public taking the waitrim survey that they put out, attending open houses, attending these meetings, writing and calling commissioners, and filling a town hall with over 200 people. I think we all thought we were out of the woods when you all voted to evenly distribute the ARPA funds last month, but Commissioner Baum had the nerve to state in the Times Herald that he's not giving up on Marine City Highway, and he's still looking for state funding on the project. I can only imagine what he'll do with his share of the ARPA funds. Jeff sees the open land in our communities as nothing more than a potential tax base, but it's so much more than that. It's our home, it's where we raise our children, where some of us make a living farming the land, and where many people have come to escape development in other areas in hopes of a quieter life. Jeff has completely disregarded the desires of his constituents, and by making statements in the paper that "we are looking for state funding," he's giving a bad name to this entire board.
Libby Pro.
I'm sorry that, once again, Jeff isn't here. He's been missing a lot of meetings. So I'm really addressing this to Jeff. Hopefully, he's watching, or he'll watch it later. Please explain why Saint Clair County failed to get any significant portion of the state's $1.6 billion spending budget, except for the $2 million that Jeff needed for Clay Township to support his downriver industrial loop. Shirley Port Huron, Spaling Water Plant, and the road conditions in Marine City and Saint, the city of Saint Clair would have been more important to the state than a $900,000 cricket field for Troy. So what work was done? I mean, I would really like to know exactly what came out of the county or how you worked with representatives to secure funding for Saint Clair County, because out of $1.6 billion, Saint Clair County is getting $2 million, and it's $2 million for Jeff Baum's project. As Tiffany had mentioned, it came as no surprise, the August 27 article in the Times Herald, this is what Jeff stated in the Herald. Just because they moved on from the larger corridor discussion doesn't mean the 26 Mile Road priority is entirely dead. Don't think that I'm not continuing to work on it. We've got state monies and MEDC grant that we apply for that we may require some matching funds. We're waiting to hear on that. So then following that, at the September 5th board, Clay Township Supervisor Artie Bryson made some statements that were concerning. Obviously, he and Jeff are working with Representative Kevin Rattell's office for infrastructure grants, and, you know, Linda made a very valid point, is this with your blessing? Artie also mentioned that the county is going to help Clay Township. So help how? And presumably, he's talking about money, because they need some matching funds. So where is that funding going to come from? Is Jeff just gonna give away, you know, District 5's million dollars again, or hand it over to the EDA for one of their pet projects? So, and along with that, Supervisor Bryson also announced his invitation to sit on the EDA board. Imagine that. You can see how this looks like a quid pro quo. Artie managed to deliver on the water and sewer for that, the upgrades to provide the industry loop that, you know, Jeff is wanting for the downriver, and despite the clear objections by an overwhelming majority of our community, Jeff continues to ignore the fact that what he is doing is stumps over our lifestyle. The EDA is an investment club. Jeff treats it like it's an extension of the government. It is not. If he has to place his ARPA funds in the hands of the EDA to distribute, he either needs to step down from the chairmanship, or he needs to step down altogether. Thank you.
Finish up, Linda. All right, no other citizens?
Just, just as a point of clarification, Chairperson Baum did reach out to us today. He has a family medical emergency that he had to attend to tonight, so just, he didn't want it shared exactly what it was, but just so everyone in the audience knows, he had a family emergency this evening. Thanks.
All right. Do we have any updates? Seeing none, any conceptual initiatives? We have no old business. Going to 7A to 2023 budget adjustments. Can I have a motion?
Make motion, send it to full board.
Support.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Motion passed. 7B, memberships and dues.
So the memberships and dues...
Can we have a motion first?
Oh, I'm sorry. I make a motion to send something to the full board.
Because we have to approve that, don't we?
Well, no, it's part of, but it's part of the budget. It'll, it's part of the overall budget, so it was more for discussion on what we'd like to see go into the budget, so I don't know how you'd like to see a motion for that.
Is this gonna have to be approved at the full board, or is it just...
It'd be approved as...
Memo just said...
Through the, through the budget process.
It's already cleared.
It would, it would be approved when we approve the budget, so not necessarily at our next meeting, but with the full budget, so...
Because normally, we have something on the agenda.
Right.
It's business that we have to take care of.
Right.
So this, this is really isn't business, it's just more of a notification.
It's a discussion topic, isn't it?
Yeah. Okay. And we'll just have a discussion. Any discussions on these items?
Yes.
The memo I got, same one everyone else got, it said, please look at the list, there's 11 items. If there's any changes, let them know for the budget purpose, so I don't think there's anything to act on as far as a monetary issue, but I did, I was very pleased with the fact that I did look at it. There's 11 items. I have not been on the board for some time, and I sent our finance director, Dean Alderdyce, a note about 3 o'clock in the afternoon or 2 o'clock, and she quickly answered my question. She did a very outstanding job. I asked her a little spreadsheet on some historical information, so if anyone's interested, you all have it, I put it at your places as well. It looks like everything's going right out, same kind of, no real increases, other than SEMCOG was an annual 6% increase, so I was very happy with that. It answered all my questions. I don't know of any other items at this point to say to add in the nature of dues or, or things of that nature, but one thing I did have a question on, and maybe Carrie can answer, this ThumbCoast TV allocation. I wouldn't want that, is that gonna be an annual automatic allocation? It's not a dues or membership, it's something we did, right?
Right, that was something new that the board had, had done, so certainly, we could bring it back next year. It wouldn't be something that we would automatically renew, but since it's something a little bit out of the norm, I did think, I thought I would include it on the list.
It's not a member, we're not, we're not, it's not a membership, right? It's not a dues, it's a service, right?
That, that's correct.
That's, I would just suggest that that be deleted from that particular list for whatever purpose, that it be treated as an independent item for review each year. That's, that'd be nice and gentle.
So it's, it's very similar to the KEAL on, on here as well.
KEAL?
So, yep, they're, they actually perform very similarly.
What is KEAL?
The KEAL is an online magazine that started, I don't know if it's been around for eight years or 10 years, so ThumbCoast is a little more local. The ThumbCoast TV is what used to be EBW TV, and so there are county departments who have been utilizing this for education purposes or creating videos that talk about parks or talk about, you know, similar to what we did at the state of the county. My suggestion would be to maybe end the relationship with the KEAL and move forward with ThumbCoast, and maybe look at it annually as well, but I think that was more of a subscription. It's kind of like a subscription. You get so many spots per month or per quarter, and the same with ThumbCoast. I can't remember how many spots we, we did per, is it per month?
Two per month with the ThumbCoast.
Do you reach out, Carrie, typically with this every year? Because we, we can look at it every year on a list like this, too.
So we have not, or the board has not reviewed this list in a long time, and that's why we thought it was important to bring it forward. Most of these have been in play, you know, the KEAL has probably been at least 10 years. That started as kind of a startup, and some of, the city of Port Huron initially was a participant in it. They no longer participate, and the county has continued to. The online publication, it's not heavily utilized by any of our county departments. There's typically not articles related to, to county business. There, there certainly is sometimes stuff related to parks and trails, but, but other than that, not very much.
And then when would we start looking at these items as a final budget item? When does that process, it started kind of now, you've given it to us our attention, but when would we have to have a kind of more research on it or looking at it?
You, you know, certainly, you could let us know, you have discussion this evening, you could act on and approve this list or this list with any modifications that you would want to make at the full board meeting. We could bring these items to you annually prior to paying them, but I know some of them, you know, let's say it would be the KEAL or ThumbCoast or one of those organizations, you know, if we weren't gonna renew with them next year, we would like to notify them just so they have, they have the heads up.
we would like to notify them just so they have, they have the heads up.
Will you formalize our budget in what month? We pass it in October?
Typically, October, November.
Okay. So we'll be looking at next year's budget here relatively quickly?
Yes.
And then, so each year, you would, I mean, that's how I'm going to treat it. When you submit your budget, these are items within that budget. We, we have to approve those anyway. So this was just kind of a heads up on those particular items you tend to submit?
Yes, these are, many of them are more board-type items. And this board has not reviewed. If you wanted to continue your membership, let's say, with SEMCOG, National Association of Counties.
You would typically include those in the budget because historically, we've done so.
Correct.
Continue that. So now's a chance to look at it and say, well, maybe we don't need KEEL or whatever other issues we may have. And you'd like input from that tonight? Or we have a little time to digest that?
You know, certainly, input tonight is fine. If, if the board wants more time, it does, it does not have to be done this evening.
I'm not quite up to speed on all of these yet. But this, maybe you guys have a better idea and I'm all ears.
Sure. Well, there are three that I, I'd like to look at. And mostly because, to Carrie's point, if these organizations are also doing their budgets in October, November, if they're on a calendar year, not a fiscal year, they'll need to know whether they can count on this subscription or this contract for the year. But the three that I have either been asked about or that have questions myself are the Chamber, the KEEL, and the CSCB, the Community Services Coordinating Body. So the CSCB, I, I think I'm on parts of that board right now, but there seem to be a lot of duplication. So I, I think these are just the three that, whether it's been brought to my attention, but the KEEL and Community Services Coordinating Body specifically to the tune of 15,000 a year. Maybe we need a deeper dive on what, what it serves, whether it's this board or employees or the public at large. So those are the three that stood out to me.
Potentially, this is an actionable item that we want to take.
No, because I think we all need more information. So maybe it could have been a conceptual initiative instead. But I don't know, I don't know who all knows what the CSCB does. Or, you know, should we get a list of what has been in the KEEL that was county-specific? Is it, you know, does it meet the $10,000 a year threshold? Or could that $10,000 be better spent elsewhere? I guess would be my question. But those are the three that, that stand out in these subscriptions.
Which is the third one? You got KEEL, Community, which is the third?
And then, well, the Chamber, because someone brought to my attention that we only belong to one, and there are at least four in the county. So just for a matter of discussion.
I guess my, my question, Carrie, would be like for the Community Services Coordinating Body. That's something that I attend with my work hat on. And so I've seen the Health Department there. I've seen the Sheriff's Department. Do they have their own memberships as departments? Or is this?
This is one county-wide membership. So this membership covers all county departments.
Just, I guess, silly question. Why is Blue Water Chamber of Commons $989? And not, does it have to be under $1,000?
That's their dues structure.
Okay.
But if we hire any more people, Dave, it might put us over the edge.
Because it does go by a number of employees, doesn't it?
Yeah.
Yeah, I believe there's ranges, yes.
A question for Carrie. Would you think it'd be appropriate if you just give us a recommendation on the benefit? As the administrator, you think they might have or not have? Would you, you think you could contribute that way or not really?
Well, you know, certain organizations, you know, I would say SEMCOG, the National Association of Counties, and the Michigan Association of Counties, those are the three that our office, I believe, derives the most benefit from. They provide information, resources, educational opportunities. So those are the ones, you know, from our standpoint. Some of the other ones, you know, the Thumb Coast, the EDA, those types of things have been more commissioner-driven. The Chamber membership.
I'd like an opportunity to digest some of this and try and get up to speed better myself rather than do something tonight on it. But that's just my two cents worth.
I think the Michigan Township Association, I have never had an issue calling them up, even though I serve on the Planning Commission. But they do a great, fantastic service. So I would definitely support the Michigan Township Association. Pretty minimal cost for the benefit you get from even one phone call.
Oh, absolutely. Yeah, one, one free call to their attorney. And you've, you've used it up. And I think our Planning Department probably utilizes that as well.
Don't be picking out attorneys.
All right, is that enough discussion? All right, we'll move on to 7C, excess workers' compensation coverage. Can I have a motion?
Motion, send it to the full board.
Support.
Discussion, I got a question because, of course, I'm a much smaller corporation than the county is. But do we look at pricing on this at all? Or are we locked in with these? That's a substantial increase for one year. I can't hear you, I'm sorry.
You have to go up there, please. Could you go to the podium, please, so we can all hear you? Thank you.
We haven't been out for bid in a while. We do plan to go out for bid next year, though.
Because I look at mine every year.
And the reason for the increase was partially because of the airport FBO. They did bump it up because of that new classification that we added.
You guys have to also do an annual audit?
Yes.
Okay. Because I do, and I'm just saying, you're much larger. So you have to give a specific audit every single year.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Motion passed. 7D, Retiree Healthcare Trust Committee Membership.
I'll make a motion to move that to full board. Support.
Any discussion?
I think this is a wonderful opportunity to get other departments involved in this really exciting meeting that's held.
Clarification? Is it adding the two members? Or removing commissioners, putting these in place of?
Right, in place of, in place of.
Well, I just.
Sure you don't want to add to it?
I'm positive, unless you would like to go.
The way it was written was in either.
I have no problem going. I had to be at a township meeting the last time. I should have sent a note out, but I couldn't be replaced at one time. I have no problem attending. I've missed very few of them over the years. If we're going to get other employees potentially at the Road Commission or some other locations, they might be of benefit. But it's pretty much just an information meeting when we go through it. Anyway, it's half an hour or an hour meeting where we just get information. Not a whole lot of input. Do we want to get an employee that's going to get paid to show up there rather than commissioners that are already paid?
I think we've missed the last two or three.
Right. Well, I missed two.
Yeah, I did too.
I have no problem attending them. So they're normally on my calendar, and I just had a township meeting I had to attend to.
So keep one commissioner and add the two?
I think adding the Road Commission and the Community Mental Health is important because they participate in that program. So let them be there and be represented, and they can go back and disseminate that information. I don't know that we need two commissioners.
Isn't there someone on the Road Commission already?
No, this is the trust fund. It's a separate, it's not the retiree healthcare. It's a separate, in addition to that meeting. But it only meets quarterly. We meet with Huntington.
Okay.
Would they be, any of these other individuals getting paid to go to this meeting?
Well, they are employees of Community Mental Health and Road Commission. So they would be similar to myself if they're attending a meeting. They're not getting paid a per diem. I guess is your question, are they going to get a per diem to go?
Are they going to get narrowly rate to show up? Because they'll have three hours, will they get mileage and that kind of? It's going to be an additional.
That is between them and their employer. That, that's not an expense to us. I did reach out to the Road Commission and to CMH, and they were both interested in being able to attend this meeting quarterly and participate and hear more about the investments. Because currently, they only get updated once a year during the actuarial valuation. And as Commissioner Beeden did say, both entities do contribute significant amount of money to this fund. So we felt they should get the quarterly updates as well.
Yes, Mary.
Does someone from Administration, a staff member from Administration, go to those?
Yes, yes, I attend.
We could even have just for this question, alternating commissioners show up. So there's one commissioner and then the other two, if we wanted to go that route. Plus our county administrator.
As long as it's not a quorum.
Not additional county commissioners, because you and I currently attend. But maybe only one county commissioner attend and then have the other two there. So you'd actually have one extra body representing the Road Commission, Community Mental Health.
Correct.
So to clarify, the motion would be to keep Commissioner Rushing on and add the two other people.
Correct. So a representative from the County Board of Commissioners, a representative from Community Mental Health, a representative from St. Clair County Road Commission. Because, and we set those assignments here from our board in January of each. So, so just a commissioner, a representative from those three. And then Carrie?
Thank you.
Is that the alternating thing you're talking about, Dave? Or is that the way?
You want to be an alternate? I have no problem being the commissioner.
No, I'm, I'm a vested retiree, so I can't really sit on the commission.
It's not, this is, this is a different, this is just the.
Healthcare.
This is just reviewing the investment performance. There's, there's no decisions made. It's just receiving information.
I don't see the need, really. I mean, you just get an administrator's report and file it.
If we have a commissioner, and then we set that when we set our assignments, does that work?
That's fine.
And it could be.
Do you have the motion that she wants to forward?
Yes.
All right. Can I have a second on that?
We do.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Motion passed. 70, Commissioner District 4. Who's District 4?
Joy.
I'm sorry.
Joy, Terrello.
Okay. Well, she's not here. But can I have a motion to send this to full board?
So moved.
Support.
Any discussion?
So I've been working with Commissioner Terrello and Angela, I always pronounce her last name wrong, on this. They, their original ask when Commissioner Dunn was on the board, things have changed for them since then. So this is just a revision of how they would like to use those funds. So they're just bringing it forward to, to ask our blessing, to repurpose the funds for a call aid system.
All right, any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Motion passed. 7F, Commissioner Vander Bosch, District 7.
Make a motion, send it to the full board.
Support.
Any discussion?
I just want, this is just some cost overages on, for some vac truck for one of the locations because we couldn't excavate with conventional means. Another one was just some easement paperwork we needed to get done, so.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Motion passed. 7G, Commissioner Beeden.
I'll make a motion to move it to full board. Support.
Any discussion?
This is just, it's for the Blue Water Allies, which is the LGBTQ community that has established a nonprofit in the south end of Port Huron. They're just looking for some support with security and some signage and things like that.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Motion passed. 7H, District Court Manning Table Reclassification Request. Have a motion.
Make a motion to send it to the full board. Support.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Motion passed. Library, 7I, Library Manning Table Changes Request.
Make a motion, send it to the full board.
Support.
Allison, if you'd please give us a rundown, because I read through it all, and you got the finances and everything. And appreciate you being here.
Thank you very much this evening to be able to talk to you about this. The library has been blessed with large support from our community. We have a lot of promises and projects that we want to move forward with. And we are having difficulty even putting any effort or focus into those projects and expending the funds as necessary because we are seeing at least one branch a week over the last several months going to curbside service, which means that we do not have enough staff on hand to fill the hours that we are currently open. We have a pact with our communities, basically, by saying, you are giving us these funds to give you services, and we're struggling right now to provide basic library services. This is not something that we have experienced before. I realize that there are many organizations and many businesses in the private sector that are all looking for employees. You see the Help Wanted signs everywhere. We are experiencing about two and a half resignations per month on average. Now, resignation could be an immediate, or it could take, you know, they could give their two weeks. Recruitment is taking at least a month to replace each of those employees. And that is just the process that we go through. Since COVID, over the last three years, we have replaced 65% of our employees of 120. We're now just, just over 100 employees. Most of the frontline employees for this entry-level position are leaving for full-time work. So what we are hoping to do with this change is to not only attract but retain talented individuals who maybe want to stay with the library but are looking for full-time work. This is building on a career ladder for the library. You can come in to an entry-level position, work for part-time, a full-time position opens up, and then you can move up into the organization as you gain experience. We are an educational organization. We're the People's University. And it's very difficult to attract talent, even at an entry level, when we cannot compete with the private sector for salaries. There's very little in terms of incentive that we can offer to our employees. We can't do tuition reimbursement. We can't do bonuses. We can't do merit raises, you know, those, those types of things. So we're trying to figure out ways that we can attract and retain the people that we spend a lot of money and effort to hire. As it stands right now, from January until June, the cost of recruitment alone for this year is over $80,000 in our staff training, recruitment time, administrators' time to go through the processes. So we're already spending a lot of money just continuing to chug through all these applicants and employees that are coming in. So my hope is that we can get these 12 positions, full-time positions, and that, that will give us enough space to focus on having meetings. We haven't been able to have a system-wide branch lead meeting for a couple of years now because we cannot take 12 people out of their branches to meet together for training purposes, for planning purposes, because that means that those branches then cannot function. We don't have enough people to have those meetings. We do have the ability to have electronic meetings, but that is just not, it has not been as effective, especially since we have replaced almost every branch lead in our system in the last three years. We need those new people to come in and build relationship, and we have not been able to do that. If we have somebody call in sick, we typically have, it, it, it makes the operation, the basic operation of a branch very difficult. In any given day, we have six, four to six shifts that need to be covered on a regular basis, every day. And it is causing some disruption in our ability to even meet the needs of the community. And we have had some phone calls recently as people attempt to use their library or their branch, and there's a sign that says we have to go to curbside because we don't have enough staff on hand to safely open a building. So my request is that we transition 12 part-time library branch assistant positions into 12 full-time library branch assistant positions for the purposes of stabilizing the library's staffing and allowing us to then move forward with many of these projects and service delivery programs that we want to develop.
Okay. Does anybody have any questions for?
Allison, if I may, the, what was presented to us is for the total cost of the 12 full-time at the top step. Do you have people, are you, are we starting at a range? Are there some entry level? Are there, are there people already at the top step?
We do have a number of people at the top step, but the likelihood that they are interested in the full time, we cannot guess, but the way I estimated the cost for the last quarter of 2023 was I took an average of step four, which is about where some of our folks are that we hired in 2020, 2021, and step eight. So, I suspect that we will not see, and I don't want to call it worst-case scenario because it's not. We like having longtime veteran employees because they bring so much value to our staff, but worst-case scenario of all 12 being at the very top of the scale and all 12 taking the most out of the benefits that would be available, that's just not realistic.
Right. So, it could take some time to get to this full 412.
Looked at the finances, there's a savings and a cost, but she's already got that covered, and if you're, what you just stated earlier, the $80,000 just that you spent to try to maintain would more than cover the deficit between the two. So, I think it's a real big plus, so that's my initial.
The other concern that we have is that as we continue to churn through individuals, you know, just this month, we have one person leaving for full-time work, one person leaving for full-time school, one person leaving for a medical condition, and one person leaving for a personal situation. So, those are not things that we have any control over, but what it does is when those folks leave, it overburdens the staff that are still in place, and then they become burned out, and then they leave. So, that's where a lot of the churn comes from.
We have a motion in a second. Any other questions for? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passed.
Thank you very much.
7J, Administration Building, filler number two replacement. Can I have a motion?
So moved.
Support.
Support.
Any discussion? I read all the finances, but it has to be done.
How quick.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passed. Other Ways and Means Matters, I only have one. Apparently, on Resolution 22-13, we just have a spelling correction that needs to be done on it. I'd like to get that signed and in place.
So, there was, when the board made the motion, they wanted the resolution, they passed the resolution with corrections, however, all the corrections weren't specified, so Chris did send out to the commissioners the revised vision just to make sure, because we certainly don't want to take the liberty of amending any resolution without making sure that we got the board's intent. So, there was some spelling errors, a couple grammatical changes that were made, so we would just need the board's feedback if that was your intent that you wanted changed.
I'll take responsibility for that. The grammatical errors were mine. The spelling errors, I spelled Chinese with a Z instead of an S in one spot, so I apologize for that, but I do much of this on my own time and without my secretary's involvement, so. And it was passed, but I did send off the last thing I had, and I changed, I corrected what I could, but any, you know.
I had sent a revised version.
That's fine, yeah.
Twice, but.
I just didn't know what happened to it. I just didn't know what happened to it.
Okay. I just want to get it finalized and maybe signed at our next meeting. All right. Any other Ways and Means Matters? Information only. Can I have a motion to receive and file?
So moved. Baldwin.
Have a second.
Support.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passed. Can I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved. Support.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We stand adjourned.